Is Eric Conisk going to be on?
It's going to be seventy-two then.
What about the scholars? When is that?
What about what?
It's already over.
It's over?
Yeah, that already happened. That was last Sunday.
Well, the email said seventeen. I thought it was.
Senior dinner.
Oh, that's the senior dinner. Yeah, that's for all seniors.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So, I think those things are on the agenda, so.
All right, we'll open it up.
That's the one you used to go to in April.
Went twice. Twice.
Senior dinner.
I saw Angie Lucas designing as a teacher.
She goes out, temporary teacher. She retired before, but Angie. She was retired, but they hired her.
She was two-thirds of the teacher this year.
She resigned from that? Is she back to retire?
Yes. Because we can find a math teacher.
She's good. She's good.
Yeah, we ended up extending some other people that were half-time and then she was.
Yeah. Yeah. What's going on here? Are we hiring? Hey, are we hiring? Are we hiring?
Surprise.
This is a work session. Welcome to the May Board meeting. We'll start the meeting off with the Pledge of Legions in a moment of silence. Pledge your legions to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which expands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. At this time, we'll repeat the vision statement. Soaring to excellence every morning, every day. Okay, next item, consideration modifications to the agenda and approval. Mr. Hart.
I recommend the agenda as presented.
Motion.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. And we'll vote on the motion to approve the agenda. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion carries. Okay, moving to the consent agenda. You had, everyone had a copy of the board minutes. April thirteenth, April twenty-second, and May fourth. Any questions on the board minutes? Okay, Mr. Norman, we'll let you run through your reports.
The first item in your packet is the bank recon. This was a normal month, so there's really nothing unusual about that. Then moving into the payroll claims and accounts payable. Same thing, it was a two payroll month, which will be the same in May and then June, what about three? Then it was, like I said, a normal month, so there's really nothing unusual in claims unless you have a question on something. And moving on to the fund report. See, the education fund made a little ground this month and should also, the month of May, because they're making the adjustment on the state support. They had cut state support to meet the state regulations that online students would not be funded at a hundred percent. And after General Assembly met, they'll make that adjustment, so that'll be during the month of May. So that's good news. And then when you look at our appropriations, we were at thirty-three point two-five percent, a little over where we projected to be. Translated to three hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. But if all stays the same, we will actually be a little bit over our twenty-five percent operating balance at the end of the year. So usually the first half of the year is a little heavier than the second half because we made HSA composites. And of course, we had prepayrolls in January, and your prepayroll months always make you a little bit behind. But on all, we actually are holding our own and things are looking good there. And then with the enrollment, our ADM is, was first of May, fifty-one twenty-fourths. We're down from where we were in February, we were fifty-one thirty-one. And of course, the fall, we were fifty-one forty-eight, and that's because of midterm graduates. That's why at this time of year, we tend to just stay flat or maybe drop a few. So we're still holding our own and hopefully with a lower graduating senior class, tenured class of four hundred or more coming in, we should grow approximately a hundred students this year. And that will be our last, one of our last small classes. Our junior class is three hundred and forty-eight, and then all of our classes primarily are four hundred or more. So there's good and bad to that. Hopefully, that's all good news. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. I'm going to run through the personnel sheet. It's, I'd read everything to be here tomorrow. So I'm going to read, try to read most of it. Retirement, Dennis Banks, part-time evening custodian. Terry Shire, bus driver. Luhan Haber, bus driver. Denise Wright, special education instructional assistant. Keith Stam, choir, general music teacher. Tom Lucas, math teacher. Kathy Thurston, elementary teacher. Jack Howard, school resource officer. Resignations. Tommy Griesener, assistant boys soccer coach. Sharon Wood, varsity boys assistant tennis coach. Karen Terrence, special ed instructional assistant. Danielle Graham, EL instructional assistant. Steve Stanfield, Title I instructional assistant. Adam Walker, EL teacher. Madeline Young Smith, elementary teacher. Angie Lucas, math teacher. Whitney Reinhardt, instructional coach. And Julie Bauer, band EL teacher. Termination. Quentin Warren, full-time evening custodian. Appointments. Chelsea Tabling, physical therapist. Will Reinhardt, temporary special ed instructional assistant. Barbara Wyatt, full-time evening custodian. Sabrina McKillop, part-time cook. Susan Hassan, Title I tutor. Cecily Noker, temporary elementary teacher. Brandon Harp, superintendent. John Thomas, Clint Thomas, special education teacher. Brittany Mills, special language pathologist. Andrea Greer, math teacher. Margaret Ayers, elementary teacher. Olivia Nichols, EL teacher. Kennedy Brown, language art teacher. Jocelyn Hackman, substitute nurse. Susan Conrad, special ed instructional assistant. Samantha Browning, head girls soccer coach at the middle school. Luke Horton, head boys soccer coach at the middle school. Brandon Davis, head boys tennis coach at the high school. Appointments pending approval of Indiana teaching license. Kirk Manz Jr., P. Ian Howe. Abby Lynn Elber, elementary teacher. Luke Horton, band director, general music teacher. Bailey Hughes, math teacher. Clayton Carr, math teacher. Jamie Arms and Joy Stuckwish and Christine Hoffman are grad point instructors. Jack, Julie Bauerbrand, Kelly Riedingart, D. Beavers, middle school ENL teachers. These are summer here. Randy Rothbauer and Adely Chavez, English nine credit recovery teachers. Scott Miller, US history teacher. The following are English teachers. Jay Barcia, Laura Cotlum, Chris Rose, Corey Zering. The following prep college teachers. Tracy Meisberger, Kelly Reasoner, Laura Cotlum, Don Jones. IREED III teacher. Susannah Phallus, Joe Ferguson. Title I IREED teacher. Liz Patterson and Angie Engel. EL IREED III teacher. Stephanie Wasco and Stephanie Pullen. Kevin Rico, administrative assistant translator. Lori Lester, summer school administrator. The following would be Title I IREED instructional assistants. Debbie Clifford, Sarah Thompson, Julieta Garcia, Haley Reeder. The following people, middle school ELN instructional assistant. Emma Madsquaz, Rocco Goodness, Jessica Gaspar. The following, ESY instruction. Kelsey Thompson, Brayanne Witten, Jenny York, Sharon Hudson, and Don Brash. Transfers. Linda Hofer, special ed to general instructional assistant. Joy Ray, part-time and full-time evening custodian. Steve Bush, principal to assistant principal. Stacy Ferrisi, district behavior autism coordinator. Caitlin Udi, counselor. Erin Floyd, assistant principal to principal. Stu Hackman, math elementary teacher. Jordan Hinkle, elementary teacher. Ashley Murphy, elementary teacher to instructional coach. Jennifer Miller, social studies to EL teacher. Kim Beckley, EL teacher. Jamie Doreo, social studies teacher. Deborah Atkinson, Title I EL teacher, EL teacher. Dalton Edco, assistant coach to head football coach at the middle school. Leave of absence. Joyce Sutherland, food service. Brooklyn Reynolds, special ed instructional assistant. Assistant. Julie King, school nurse. Amanda Haney, study hall monitor. Dan Ginger, bus driver. Sharon Clark, full-time evening custodian. Natasha Lewis, elementary teacher. Katie Estes, special ed instructional assistant. Administratively, Renee Streetemeyer. Contracted services, Christopher and Associates. And then we have a sheet that, if anybody's looking for a job. It's two and a half pages long. It's posted on our website, so it'll be posted in all the buildings, so. A lot of good jobs there. Okay. Professional leave request. Board members had a copy of these. Any questions on professional leave requests? Overnight boys soccer trip to University of Indianapolis. And the last under consent agenda, Purple Star School designation resolution. Any questions over the consent agenda? Okay, if there's no questions, have a motion.
Some would.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, if there's no discussion, we'll vote on the consent agenda. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion carries. Okay, next items are communication and recognition. Mr. Hart.
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to welcome Lori McDonald. She's with the Tribune and replaced in January, so it's good to have you here. Appreciate you being here. I've been giving the COVID update, and I'll do that again tonight. Conditions remain good within the schools. We still have some staff members waiting on their second shot or waiting on that two-week window to be considered fully vaccinated. So we're still there. At this point, we are having all of our capstone year-end events. Some of them, especially at the elementary level, do have restrictions in place based on size and those sort of things. We can feel ourselves, we want to be cautious, but we're optimistic that we're starting to move out of this. Our hope is, in the fall, is to come back with a normal school year. We're still waiting on guidance from the state as to what that's going to look like. But we're hopeful that will be normal, and I'll keep you informed of that. Outside of that, I will plan on giving any other COVID updates from month to month unless conditions change. If I have any questions.
Mr. Hart, special recognition.
Yes. I have a few people I'd like to recognize here. First of all, Mrs. Prangy, will you come up? As you know, Mrs. Prangy is our librarian through the high school, our media specialist. And I got the following letter from the Indiana Library Federation. Dear Mr. Hart, congratulations. A member of your staff, Jill Prangy, is an Elliot Rosewater Indiana High School Book Award winner. Jill contributed an estimated two-hundred-plus volunteer hours to the Roseys program during 2020. Then it goes on to talk about the program, and she says, "We see firsthand how Jill's contributing to student school success through the Roseys program, and thank Jill for instilling life form reading habits. We extend our thanks to you as well, your support of recreational reading and literacy." And she put a handwritten note in there that Jill has been a positive force within the organization and a great representative to our school. So I'd like to present this and I'll lift it over here to Jill Prangy. Next, I'd like to call up Stacy Townsend. Stacy, as you know, is our food services director, and I got this letter from the DOE. Dear Mr. Hart, in early January of 21, Indiana's school food service programs were challenged by our department to demonstrate and, when necessary, make improvements in nutritional quality. And freshmen's and venues agreed to serve local schoolchildren. Good nutrition is always extremely important, but especially so during a nationwide pandemic. We are happy to announce that the food service staff of Seymour Community Schools welcomed this challenge and hereby is presented with the Gold Level Award. Please present this award to them and thank them in person for providing nutritious and warbling meals to your students. And that's from Julie Sutton, director from the DOE and Office of School and Community Nutrition. So we received the Golden Delicious Apple Award. I'd like to present that to Stacy. And then lastly, I'd like to bring up Ben Fox. Ben is our welding instructor at the high school, and we have our first group of students who have completed their certification, and he's going to introduce those students.
All of our second-year students received a, received four certifications this year. Steak welding, big welding, take welding, and flux core. They all passed really well, the whole Native-US education program. So most of our, Bryce, Brian.
Jackson Ross. Howard. Stacy Lopez. All right, and that was our five second-year students for this year.
Hey, Ben?
Yes?
I have a question. So are most of those guys seniors?
All but one.
All but one. How does, how does that position them going? My guess is they want to pursue a career in welding. How does that position?
I have, I have one that wants to, is going to go to college next year, looking welding engineering. Mr. Ross is looking to get a full-time job straight out of school. Luis is looking to go to Navy, and he's already signed into that. And Bryce is looking for a full-time job out of school as well, so. They all are looking and have prospects in welding careers.
Will they go into, if they go into a welding job out of high school, will their income be higher than if they weren't? Didn't have these certificates?
So these certificates are, so these are through the AWS, so American Welding Society. This is through their, the American Welding Society Educational Program. It's called the SENS program. There's, there's a few levels. This is the entry level, Level One Weld Certification, so they've passed a whole Level One cert, which is the high school level. They can go on to ID Tech, I believe, also works with the SENS Level Two if they want to continue and get a Level Two. But yes, so the SENS program shows that they not only physically completed all of these certifications, but they've also done footwork with it. It has nine modules, and it's footwork along with the welding processes that they complete.
Good luck, Jim.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Prangy. End of year update.
Got to acknowledge all that really good stuff we just heard about there. We're really proud of that, our program, our students, and our adults that work under this roof. Thank you for the opportunity to get that welding program off the ground. Really, really awesome. As Mr. Hart alluded to earlier, we are looking forward to some end-of-the-year events. Ones in particular, we were asked about four months ago by the Health Department, move our prom back from April thirtieth to late the school year as we could go. And we picked the last day of the year that the venue isn't actually available. Put together a pretty extensive safety plan that the Tribune had published for us, and it was approved by the Health Department. And we're looking forward to having a good, safe night on May twenty-eighth. We're in the middle of ticket sales now. Our newly awarded Rosie member here is in charge of the ticket sales, and she says the bills are going well at this point in time. Seniors have one more day of just senior buying tickets, and then juniors get their opportunity on Thursday. And then next week, they can start buying for their guests. So we're cheering it up to make sure the seniors have the first opportunity at prom. We have a lot of mitigating issues with the prom, ready the tents, and out the back of Peter Hall, so we have an area to deal with. Masks are going to be required unless they're reading or taking pictures. Chapel rooms will be masked. We'll have four SOI referrals working out there. School owners will be there as well. So hand sanitizer, all the things that we can be able to do. And on top of that, the prom is a voluntary event, and most, if not all, of the prom attendees will have the opportunity to have a commutation if they choose. Most are sixty. Been in almost constant contact with Dr. Fish about prom and graduation since February. In fact, I sent him a text the other day, I said, "I promise, this is not about the prom, it's about my graduation. I've got to live something else they talked to you about." But he's been really helpful in putting together this program. Graduation, June sixth, two-thirty. It's a good thing we've got a very big gym. We're going to ask families to spread out and stay masked in the building. At this point in time, I don't think we'll have to put a limit on attendees. We'll keep an eye on it if they're trending well. So there will be some, some, I think we haven't done in the past, the graduates will be masked. They'll be allowed to take their masks off as they come up on stage, get their picture taken, receive their diploma cover. We're not going to shake hands this year that we've done in the past, so that's a little bit different. But other than that, we're looking forward to getting back to our traditional, normal way of doing things at the end of the year. There's no way in the world we can replicate last year's graduation if we tried. Due to the weather and everything, it just turned out perfect, so. I think the kids and the parents that I've talked to so far are really happy. We're able to do what we've done, and I'm sure they'll continue to succeed with the year. If they have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Lisa, any audience communication?
Yep.
Okay. School board, John.
No.
I'd just like to thank the staff one more time. It has been one of those kind of years, and they have met the call of duty, so to speak, with real honors. And sincerely, we all appreciate it. Thank you.
No, nothing.
Yeah, I'd like to, in that what Kenny said, I don't think anybody's job got easier this past year, that's for sure. Also like to shout out to Seymour scholars and the teachers that that was chosen as our most influential teacher. I have a personal interest in it this year, but it's a great honor to see that every year, hear those kids talk about their teachers, so.
Okay, let's move on to donation and grants. Mr. Bush.
Good evening, everyone. I'm at the Redding Elementary. I would like to propose that we accept a fifteen-hundred-dollar donation from Cummins for their education fund.
Motion?
Absolutely. Second?
Second. Any discussion? Okay, we'll vote to accept the grant. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bush.
Make the vote.
Thank you.
Project Lead the Way grant. Orhan Wesel. Orhan Wesel.
She couldn't make it tonight, so I will pinch it here. I may need packets of Project Lead the Way grant for $700 to offset the cost of the gateway program and we would recommend accepting that.
Motion for this?
So moved.
Second? Okay. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, we'll vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same. Moving on, Lisa, a couple things, items you have there.
Student Learning Recovery Grant Program. This is something in state funding, $150 million that they're making available. There is no maximum or minimum to apply for. Seymour Schools, it was released about a week ago and it's due tomorrow. So you have the description in your drop box of what this was to be used for. Basically, I'll try to sum this up. You are to design a program to accelerate learning. And we plan to submit a proposal tomorrow and we will be asking for somewhere in the neighborhood of about 1.1 point 2 million is what we will ask for. This will fund programs for an intensive boot camp to define what accelerated learning is. The whole purpose of the funds, all the funds that we're providing through ESAR, not to duplicate that. So what we're doing is we're hiring additional staff. The only thing we do is hire staff without a plan and we get what we've always got. So we are going to focus on what it needs to accelerate learning, how to impact that, training our staff, anytime that we put funds into building the capacity of our staff, that is something that can be sustained over time. The other thing that we're doing is we are not seeking to add a lot of programs for teachers to learn. We're going to focus on bringing in folks that we either one have a longstanding relationship with or our programs are already in place. Grant wants you to focus on students who have a gap in their learning. They want you to focus on English language learners. They want you to focus on special education students. They want you to focus on partnering in your community. Our partner is Boys and Girls Club. We are going to purchase and extend S A N D, which is a program we put in place as an intervention. We've seen growth with that. We're partnering with Boys and Girls Club to extend that. Pay tutors after school to continue our work during the day with targeted students. We will look at hiring folks to assist with data collection. So there is a whole progression of things that is focused on accelerating learning and student learning. And you had to explain all this, 100 words or less, so that was a challenge.
That was 100 words or less?
Yes. At each, you know, like you had to describe how your, you know, like how you described your program and metrics that you would use, write SMARTboards, multiple SMARTboards, you only have 100 words. So you have to distill down exactly what, what you're gonna, that was a challenge for me. I would explain. But I, I think we have a plan and we're gonna work our plan. We're gonna see how much they will grant us to work on that plan.
Thank you.
The other, this summer, of course, we already had summer P E plans in motion and we're having a totally tubular summer, giving our staff the opportunity to use some online training that our staff is developing to teach each other. And when the Blues Canoes Liberty heard about us going totally tubular, they decided they wanted to be a part of that and they gave us two vouchers because they knew canoes and tubing and that type of thing. So for the participants, we'll come up with some way that we can give these away to staff that participate in summer training. So that's a $240 delivery voucher.
Let's put both of those together there.
Motion, third?
Cover grant and the Blues Canoes, we'll put those together. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Second, okay. Any discussion? Okay, if there's no discussion, we'll vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion carries. Okay, construction projects, Steve.
Yeah, I'm excited to say that you had a construction claim for our drainage project. It's been a long time coming and they're about 30% done with this particular claim for Keen Struckin'. As you can see when you pull in, there's a lot of underground tanks that have been installed and so it's, it's nice that we've actually seen this project get out of the way and finally start. So that's the only construction claim that I've had at the scene.
They will redo all the blacktop?
Yeah, that's all part of that. That's, I know it's, it's been kind of hard for the high school to be going on while school's in session, but with everything else, it just had to be at that time. Hopefully that will eliminate our future drainage problem here at high school. And the, the amount is 182 or 4850 and then we'll keep, we'll keep the drainage back.
Okay, playgrounds. Oh yeah.
The playgrounds are, are complete. This will be the last time that will be on there. All the principles are reported in. Playgrounds are getting a lot of use and we're happy to hear that. Those have been good, positive projects for the corporation.
Steve, do we need a motion for that?
Yes.
Motion on the high school drainage?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, we'll vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Okay. Motion carries. Education facility in corporate way? Mr. Stark?
Thank you. As you know, hopefully you've been over to the new building and seen what we've been doing over there for several months now. We're kind of the next stage here where we need to get some energy management control within that building upgraded. It's running currently off of a matty air system. I mean, they were great in their time, but it's outdated, needs to be upgraded so we can schedule, see our rooms, our temperatures, those types of things, manage that system better, save us money and also be more efficient and more accurate in that system. So tonight we recommend and put a request out for three different, to three different companies, Conserve, Johnson Patrols, Coke Mechanical, and we got three different quotes back. The love quote was, Conserve, 118, 850, I believe. Vote on that and we recommend that we accept that quote and go ahead and continue to do this work.
We have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we'll vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion carries.
Thank you.
First read items. Mr. Manns. Oh. What'd that miss?
Action, Lori.
Mr. Brown? Oh, okay, I'm sorry, it's back up. Lori, yeah. I just wanted to wake you up back there. Just going to fall asleep.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to ask that you approve our 2021, 2022 elementary student handbook. I submitted to you last month as a volunteer.
Okay, you all had a copy of this to look over? Do we have a motion?
Sir.
These, oh, these are first read. No, okay, I'm mixed up, okay. Yeah. Got a motion, we got a second? Okay. Any discussion? Okay, no discussion, we'll vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion carries. Thank you, Lori. Social studies textbook adoption. Mr. Brown?
Hello, everyone. If you recall, last month I came to you as a first read for kindergarten through fifth grade social studies adoption process. Since then, the committee has met, reviewed all of that information that I gave you last meeting, has, is recommending that we adopt Savus Learn, which is formerly Pearson for K through five social studies adoption. If you see in your packet, you will notice some teacher input. We had over 60 teachers participate in a survey where they were able to get information on all three of those companies, get all of our questions answered as to standard alignment, cost, and all the questions that our teachers would like to have answered to make a good decision on our adoption process. In the end, the teachers voted and the adoption agreed that the best course of action was to recommend Savus Learn for kindergarten through fifth grade social studies adoption. So I do recommend that we approve their recommendation. Any questions?
We have a motion to approve?
To approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Good job, Justin.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thanks.
No discussion, we'll vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion carries. Okay, now let's, Mr. Stark. Summer projects.
Yes, we're continuing our, some of our C P F projects and we submitted a request for quotes. Carpet rooms 201, 204, Seymour High School. And then we were gonna be working on crack ceiling and seal coating and striving of all our corporate parking lots. So we've got the quotes there for you. Recommendations come out, we took the love quote that each one. Carpet one is the one that received the award for the high school 201, 204. Naval Mara, crack seal. Striving, S and S, Temple, Temple, crack seal. Striving, a sixth grade center, ventilation building, central services center, Emerson, All-Star Navy, crack seal, that high school, Portland, Redding, Alex, Jackson, Dagdulik and Brown. We'll make that recommendation to you, Doc.
Okay. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, if there's no discussion, we'll vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stark. Okay, we've got some first read items. Mr. Manns, first.
Good evening. Seeking approval for the 2021, 2022 student athlete pair handbook. I answer any questions this year. Thank you, I have it.
There's no questions. We'll bring this back next month and we'll prove.
If I can, I would, I would ask, should we waive the first read if that's possible? The other first read?
We can do that, can't we?
Sure. I'll make that motion.
Okay. Can he make some motion to waive the first read?
I'll second.
Second? Any discussion? Okay, we'll vote on waiving the first read. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion carries. Okay, now, we need a motion to approve the handbook.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, if there's no discussion, we'll vote on this. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion carries. Kurt, what's the timeline on the new lights, the scoreboard or?
The lights are just about finished. There are a couple fixtures that started to go wrong that still need to be put in place. We have to get the lighting programmed as to, we're gonna get training on it. Right now, they're, they're, the motion sensors. So you can't, you can't light up the old gym all the time unless you've got people in. So they'll be coming in very shortly here to help us program it so we can set and have the settings the way that we like. The scoreboard will be installed a week to light it. So we all, you all, all season.
The lighting will make graduation, correct?
Yes. Lighting will make graduation. It's, it's, you know, it's, if you're in there right now, you tell the old gym, there's just a few fixtures that still need to be put in place.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Stacy. Meal prices.
Good evening. Each year the U S C A gives us pricing guidance for the upcoming school year and this year that guidance consists of a new round of waivers. So the first is a waiver to allow operation under seamless summer option, which what that does is it allows us to provide meals at no cost for all students regardless of their eligibility. It is the same meal pattern that we would serve under the national school lunch meal pattern. So as far as what the students are receiving at the cafeteria and what their expectations are, we did same as the regular school year, just no costs associated with the meals. And then the second waiver allows for us to claim those meals under the summer food service reimbursement. So that would be a higher reimbursement rate than what we would normally receive during the school year. Then some other waivers are continuing to allow us some flexibility in meal service times, non-congregative eating, allowing for parents and guardians to continue to pick up meals for children. So if we find ourselves in a, again, a non-traditional meal service for any reason, we have the flexibility to operate that way as we have this year. Then for adult prices, any schools implementing the summer season option for 2021, 2022 school year, lets the adult prices using the non-pricing method. So what that means is that the meals, the meal price has to be set equal to or greater than the free reimbursement rate. So that will necessitate a 10% increase in lunch price and breakfast price. So our adult prices would be $2.30 for breakfast and $3.85 for lunch for the upcoming school year. Any questions about the waivers or the pricing?
Any questions? Okay.
Alright, we'll bring it back next month.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brown, additional course offerings, Seymour High School.
We would like to add a course for our academy students with emphasis is on learning
with emphasis is on learning life skills. They will need to be on the halls of high school when they leave here by 2021, 2022 years old. Focus is a lot more on the community aspect, going places, shopping, restaurants, the library, places that specifically the person need to know how to be on their own when they're out in public setting. You may ask for transportation issues, take the kids to different places or public transportation. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Frank. Mr. Fosbury, bus purchases.
As you all remember, earlier this year, we decided to put a hold on bus purchases until later on this year. Looking at June, halfway through the year now, I still feel we are in need of four new buses. I've questioned all of them several times about how we should proceed. So I'm bringing it back to you at this time. Do we want to bid four buses? Or do we want to bid two? None? What would your favorite be?
Where's our rider traffic at, Tim? I mean, I know you can't monitor it on a day-to-day, but man, I'm looking at buses that doesn't have very many heads in there. I mean, particularly in the rural routes.
In the Portland area, yes. The numbers are down, and there's a good possibility we will be eliminating a route in that area next year with Blue Van's retirement.
Does that eliminate a bus out there?
Yes, it would.
Are you looking beyond that route? Into eliminating any more routes?
At this time, I don't think we can. We do have areas where kids have moved out of, but then we've got other areas that are just booming. The population has shifted from area to area is what we're seeing.
The buses that you're proposing, are they gas or diesel?
They, I'm looking at going with gas. That would be my preference.
And that's 85 passenger?
No, that would be 72.
72?
There are 78 passenger seating, 72 to get spacing for high school students. We were looking at two conventionals, one handicap, and what activity is what the original proposal was. And like I said, I'm just looking before I go out and start going through the whole process again to see where we're at as far as numbers. I want to see what you guys, how you'd like we proceed.
Is there any disadvantage of getting four quotes?
No, I'd say quota. And I know the need there for this.
Handicap?
Yeah, was there. I understand that. I just didn't feel early on, number one, we didn't know where the budget was going to come in. Number two, I didn't feel like that we utilized those vehicles at the end of last year. They only ran a half a year.
Right.
And now I'm seeing rider traffic way down.
In your area, yes, they are down.
Well, it's not just my area. I see them in town and everywhere else, Tim. I mean, I, I don't know whether the bus ridership will come back once we're beyond this pandemic or not. It looks like our rider traffic. You know, if it were up to me, I'd say let's put driveways in and ready for sure. And maybe the middle school because we've got more congestion than we've got school bus traffic.
Yes, we do. I agree with that.
Is there data on the buses, the numbers?
The, as far as ridership?
Yes.
We are down about 500 a road last year.
Is there data on individual routes?
Yes, we need to go through that, yes.
I mean, I'd like to see that. You're down 500 a day?
Yes, roughly. It fluctuates.
Sure. There's no harm in pricing.
Well, I understand. I'm just looking for marketability as to how to win the price.
Do we need to waive the first read? Is this first read? So any going to prices for next time? Just if they all come back and start writing the vessel. Okay, we need to do that.
School's over, Joe. We're out. I mean, we, we're out there. We need to re-apply first read. You can go and get, yeah, you can get quotes. You get quotes, Bill.
But a tip away. If we think we know we're going to need some, however we wait, it's like anything else, steel everything going out. They're like moving out. And the timeline on getting them delivered once they order, we better figure it won't take them longer than normal. It's like anything else.
And that's possible, too. Are we at the end of the model year on those? When do they flip into that?
I'm not necessarily for sure on that, but the, right now, if I was to order buses in June, which would be early, it would, that would be looking at probably January, January before we use that delivery. They're that far out.
That's not really no better. I'm saying. We like to get it by then. I bet every couple of rate takes a minute to go.
And I've also heard activity buses are running about a year out now. And that's because of the shitty chassis underneath them. I've heard that, too.
If these 500 people decide to come back and ride the buses, do we have enough buses?
Yeah, we'll be back stuffed again.
Okay.
These are not additional ZP trade. Take nothing other than place for trade.
I think we need to get the, as soon as we can. I think we need to go ahead and waive the first read here so we can get some bids. Meanwhile, we can decide how many we want to order of any of our lot. We didn't get Paul Rollin here if it's like anything else. If we need them, I wouldn't expect to get anything on time right now. Way out, way out of season. Even when they tell you an hour.
Is that a motion?
Yep. Go ahead and make a motion to waive the first read.
Okay.
Yep.
You don't know, you're just giving permission. When he comes, when he comes back with the quotes, that would be the, that would be, then he would be making the recommendations we need to approve.
Sounds good.
So we're giving you permission.
The guy I'm just looking for is what you want us to look at?
Yeah, okay.
And how many? Because the numbers will reflect on what this $100 amount is.
Well, you know what I think of diesels? And the DEF and the clean out. I mean, I'm in for gasoline, even though the capacity may be down a little bit, Tim. I think then hopefully you could put those into the right areas.
Yeah, my thoughts exactly.
And into the right routes, if you will, and then keep the larger buses on where needed, if you will. But I just don't like that DEF clean out.
Neither do I. I think the last one we had, we were around six grand to go through it.
And how many miles was that or probably?
I don't know for sure, but the factor with buses is they don't get out of the road and run. So therefore, they don't get the soot blowed out like the over-the-road trucks do. So therefore, it happens more often in buses or small delivery vehicles.
That's several gallons of gas, which is cheaper than diesel.
Explain to us what the DEF cleanup is or?
The DEF is an additive or extra tank on the vehicle, and it actually sprays that fluid into the exhaust, which burns the soot out, which takes the emissions down. It's quite an extensive process.
Those filters plug up already. And an over-the-road truck, you still have to maintain them. It's 2,500 for, just to burn them out. And those buses that run routes that start, stop, start, stop versus something like the interstate that is cleaning all the time. He's going to have a great deal more issues than something out over the road. And if it's six grand, that's huge.
Well, and you're also looking at, I think, this year, we did eight buses. And a lot of, suppose they set.
Okay.
Other thoughts? Is gas the way to go, Ben?
I think so.
Joe.
I hope you're on this.
I was ready with the other.
That was a thought process anyway.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
If you have any thoughts or ideas, feel free to even call.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, before we adjourn here, retirement celebration is May 27 at the Pines. And our next school board meeting will be Tuesday, June 8.
And our next school board meeting of June 8, we're not sure where that's going to be yet. This room will not be available, so I will make sure to announce that.
Graduation.
Graduation.
Project six, six.
Yeah, that's the six.
That's a pretty great question.
Yeah.
Okay. So this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Now the second. Okay, we'll vote. All those in favor, aye. All opposed, the same. Motion carries. So eventually, we can't even want to go with gas and all the buses.
They were bigger buses. But now it's, thank you so much. I wonder if that bus gets a home state. Get them out there and go.
I can see where that may be a problem.
Start, stop, in the city, this, and those. People block out. Just, they just all that. They hit start on the gas.
There you go.